Twenty-second, twenty-twenty, Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders meeting. Can we please have a roll call, Lou?
Freeholders, after.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Bass.
Here.
Duffy. James.
Yeah, here.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Here.
Director Lazar.
Here.
Uh, can we have the announcement of the open public meeting law, please?
Public notice, take notice, the public, the, the, the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders on January sixth, twenty-twenty adopted resolution number R dash twenty-twenty dash zero 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 one, which calls for the location of the conference and regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty at five-thirty PM and six, six PM respectively. Due to the state of emergency and the public health emergency, to clarify, New Jersey Governor Philip Murphy set forth an executive order, uh, number one oh three, and further limitations of public gatherings set forth an executive order, number one oh four. The board will hold their regular meeting virtually via Passaic County Live and Cisco WebEx. Additionally, pursuant to administrative order number twenty dash zero one issued by the Passaic County Administrator, closing the administration building for the public effectively March eighteenth, twenty-twenty at eight-thirty AM. The board will, will, has canceled the conference meeting and shall hold the regular meeting at six PM. There will be no members of the public physically present and authorized under NJSA ten colon four dash twelve A. If a member of the public wishes to place public comment on record, please email public@passaiccountynj.org, start stating your name, address, and matter to be addressed by the board no later than September twenty-second, twenty-twenty at five PM, or by participating on Facebook Live, uh, at our Facebook website. Uh, the, the clerk of the board shall read the same into the public record. Moreover, some members of the board may participate telephonically pursuant to bylaw or bylaws and in compliance with NJSA ten colon four dash twelve dash one. Edsec official action will be taken. Uh, this notice was published both in the Herald News and the Bergen Record.
Thank you. Could we have the invocation, please?
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love. Be gracious enough to bless thy servants, uh, our freeholders in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety throughout the work. Amen.
Amen.
And the pledge of allegiance. Go ahead, Duff. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal and justice for all. Thank you. Hold on, you're muted. Yeah. No. Hold on, I'll help you.
Holy, holy, who's talking?
There you go.
Now we can see you, Bruce.
Yeah, it's weird. I'm on Twitter.
A good friend, long-term, uh, police officer Frank Pacelli passed away, uh, for cancer for a long time. Good man, long career in Patterson. Keep your prayers, keep yourself, uh, keep him in your prayers if you would. Thank you.
Okay.
A brother Fidelian of mine.
Yeah. Shrimp.
Frank Pacelli, okay. So can we have a moment aside to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the armed forces? And for Frank Pacelli, one of our own? Thank you. Um, can I have a move, uh, a motion to approve the minutes of September eighth, twenty-twenty?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Who made the second? Was it Freeholder Bartlett?
Yeah.
Or me, don't matter.
Okay. Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore. Director Lazar.
Yes. Okay, now we're gonna have a presentation by Persley and Associates.
Director, um.
Albert's there.
Yep, we have, uh, I don't know if, uh, if, if they have video or not, but, uh, Albert, Jeffrey, and Tom, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Can you?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me, Tony?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, a- as you know, um, I don't, I guess probably the beginning of the year or the end of last, I'm not even sure how long ago, that we had hired a personally an associate, uh, to conduct, um, amongst other things in our Human Services Department, uh, a, a needs assessment. And tonight they're going to make a presentation on, um, I guess in part, I, I don't know, Tom or Jeff, you want to jump in, uh, in part what they have done to date. So, um, I'll just try, I'm not sure Tom or Jeff or Al, who's taking the lead here.
Tony, I'll, I'll start, and I'd like to thank you and, uh, the Board of Freeholders for having the opportunity to work with the Department of Human Services, as well as the, uh, opportunity tonight to present the needs assessment for Human Services and the proposed plan of action. Um, this, this presentation and the needs.
Could you please, hold on. Could you please tell us who you are because you're speaking, but don't be identified? And we can't see your face. Like, I don't know who's talking.
You're lucky if you can't see my face. So, am I not loud enough?
I don't know who you are. You're not, you didn't identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm Jeff Persley.
Ah, wow.
Now you don't want, you're lucky if you can't see my face.
Funny, Jeff.
So, uh, we would, uh, we, this, uh, this plan of action and the needs assessment, uh, is based on almost three thousand community contacts, uh, that the team has performed. Albert and, uh, Tom and Gina Heranis, uh, have performed over the last several months. So it's a pretty comprehensive piece of work, and we're very, very pleased to have the opportunity to present it to you. Um, I'm gonna introduce, uh, Tom Blatner, who is the President and CEO of Janus Solutions. Uh, I'm also, uh, introducing, I think you all know, Albert Linderman, the head of the, uh, Department of Human Services Management Team. And unfortunately Gina Heranis, who is a senior VP for Janus Solutions, is unable to be, uh, part of the presentation tonight due to a, uh, a, a very significant accident that happened next door to her house. And, uh, she's kind of out of commission. She's healthy and she's fine, but her house is, uh, out of commission and, uh, as well as a lot of other problems. So Tom, why don't you, uh, start off with the presentation?
Thank you. Um, Mike, do we, can we put the PowerPoint? Up. So, um, yeah, I'm Tom Blatner, and I'm the founder and president of Janus Solutions, and we are a long-time human service consulting firm in New Jersey. And, um, we are really pleased to be, um, to be able to present the, uh, the, the Human Service Needs Assessment to you and the Plan of Action with recommendations. Uh, what I, what I'd like to say right from the beginning, uh, I'd like to thank the Freeholder Director and Freeholder James for giving your time to Dr. Linderman and for stating, uh, that you're not interested in having a needs assessment that's a pretty piece of paper that sits on a shelf, but you're looking for some action. And I, I want to say to Mr. De Nova from the first time we met, he made that point. And so the, the idea behind this, this needs assessment is not necessarily to produce a good report, which I think we have, um, you know, we've done. We have a good, a good report that we've, uh, handed in for the final review. But much more importantly, that this is hopefully gonna be the basis for positive action moving ahead. So I want to, um, thank everybody for, you know, your support and really your insistence that this be a, a basis for action. Uh, next slide. So basically, in terms of the, what we did, the needs assessment, uh, we have a framework that we've developed over a number of years that we've used in a number of communities around the state. Because it's really sort of hard to wrap your head around, you know, human services and human needs and everything. So we've developed a very basic framework that looks at the journeys that people take in their lives from, uh, really before they're born to the end of life. Um, and we've broken it down into stages of early childhood, positive youth development, uh, transitions to adulthood, productive adulthood, and, um, you know, successful aging. So it's a very simple way to understand sort of the life journey. And then through a lot of highfalutin research, but more importantly, with a lot of conversations with parents and individuals in the community, we've arrived on a framework that says there are basically four pillars that we all need to have some mix in the play, in place to have a decent chance of a good life. And those pillars are financial security, personal safety, family relationships and community connections, health and well-being, and learning and education. So we use this framework as we went through this whole needs assessment process. And then the other thing we did, in addition to looking at the conditions of folks in the community, is that we were looking at the delivery system itself in terms of the organization of services. Can residents, um, figure out how they find what they need? Uh, can they navigate it with ease? Um, is it clear about where they're supposed to go for help, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So we looked at both the conditions of residence and also the way that services are organized. And our methodology is, uh, pretty straightforward. We did a massive data collection of out Passaic County, um, and organized it, dumped it into this framework. And then we had, because been part of our methodology is not just to have data, but more importantly, have a lot of people from the community participate in this. And I think that if we had, um, if we had thought when the COVID hit that we would end up with almost twenty-seven thousand, uh, residents participate in one way or another in this process, um, I, I would have said, you know, impossible. But, but one of the a- aspects of our work is to not, not only identify the problems and the issues, but to identify the strengths. And what came out of this process in the, you know, very difficult times was the, the strength and the interest and the commitment of people from all over the county. You know, up county, you know, Patterson, Passaic, Clifton. We, in the surveys, we all got almost twenty-five hundred surveys, focus groups. Um, the Freeholders graciously gave some of your time. Um, and one of the strengths we've identified, which will be a theme of this presentation and the name of the presentation, is community mobilization for collective impact. Because our major finding, in addition to, you know, what I'm gonna go through in terms of the data and everything, was that the entire Passaic County community stands ready to do something. And they stand ready at a very difficult time, um, in our history. So I, I wanna, uh, just, um, make that point, and I'll make it over and over again. Next slide, please. So in terms of the big picture, the, the key issues that kept coming up over and over again, housing and homelessness, and we'll talk more about that, uh, poverty and income disparities. Um, and we'll talk about that. And then the opioid epidemic. Those were the three major, um, substantive issues that have come up through the needs assessment. And then in terms of looking at the way that things are organized, there is a, a lack of information and access to services that residents have expressed. It's not in one place, it's not easy to find. There are a lot of resources out there, but nobody knows exactly how to, how to, how to get to them. That most of the services are reactive in the sense that they're organized around reacting to crises. And there is, there's, uh, been little attention to proactive planning that will begin to bend the turn, the, the, the curve towards prevention and the success of residents. Um, the services are out there, but they're, they're fragmented. In some areas, there are gaps in service, or, you know, up county, for example, is an example of that. And throughout the county, there are racial and ethnic, uh, inequalities. Um, and just a single statistic that I'll mention is for non-Hispanic white median household income ninety thousand four hundred seventy-seven. For, um, black families, forty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-five. And for Hispanic, uh, families, forty-five thousand eight twelve. So the, the, uh, racial and ethnic, ethnic inequalities are, came up over and over again, both in the data and community voice. Next slide, please. So what I'm gonna, I'm gonna very quickly go through each of these, uh, pillars and just give you an overview, starting with homelessness. And, um, as I mentioned, homelessness in the surveys and all the, you know, conversations we have with residents and in the data is, you know, popped up as the number one challenge, uh, for residents in the county. And we're gonna be spending some time at the end of the presentation on that. So I'll move along to the next slide. In terms of financial security, um, as I mentioned, there's, there are big income gaps. There are a lot of people who are doing really well. But because of the few people who aren't doing well, there's a, a big gap between the median household income and the cost of living in the county. So we have made two general, uh, recommendations here. Um, one is that there are a lot of benefits out there that people are not taking advantage of. And so one of our recommendations, uh, i- is, is to make sure that people are aware of what benefits they're eligible for, and how do we reach out to them and get them to sign up? Because it's a shame right now that people aren't taking full advantage of, you know, all the bene- benefits that, um, they can access. But beyond that, uh, we're recommending a financial recovery and empowerment initiative so that people, um, begin to move towards self-sufficiency. And this, this was a cry that came up in every single one of the resident, um, you know, interactions was, yeah, we need to, we need to have some basic, um, needs met, but we, we need to start moving towards financial empowerment so that, um, in terms of jobs and entrepreneurship and, uh, access to financial planning and homeowner programs, you know, that, that there's a real need to start working towards, uh, financial self-sufficiency. Next slide, please. In terms of safety, um, this came up both in the data and, you know, the input from the communities. And so our recommendations, um, involve, you know, bringing neighborhood assessments and safety and crime issues to the communities through crime mapping, uh, to, to continue to look at the racial and ethnic inequities, uh, particularly the over-representation in the juvenile justice system and the need for more, uh, trauma-informed practices to serve youth, particularly opportunity youth, or th- those kids who are sixteen to twenty-four, who if we don't get them support and get them into the mainstream now, we're gonna lose them. Uh, continued focus on prisoner reentry and, um, L.A. mentioned opportunity youth. And I'm sorry to be going through these so quickly. Uh, we have, the report will be available to you, and of course, we're available for any questions that you might have, uh, tonight and going forward. Next slide, please. The biggest issue that came up, uh, popped up in, uh, family relationships and, and community connections was the inability of a lot of people to be able to get around. Um, and seniors and families, you know, who are, who are living in the suburbs and trying to get their kids to school when they can go to school and get to work. There were a lot of issues around transportation. Um, and so we have some, made some recommendations here, which again, I'm not gonna go into detail now. But I'll talk to you about how we're gonna deal with all these recommendations as we go forward. And then of course, with the, um, the COVID is to develop and expand teleservices uh, so that people don't have to travel. And, um, it's so impersonal and difficult to deal with, as we've just experienced. But it is the new normal, I'm afraid, for a while. Next slide. The, the other issue under family relationships and community connections is that people just can't, they don't know where to go to get help. And, um, so we're, we're recommending that there be a very simple, inexpensive way to catalog all the resources out there, how to get the word out to residents, and how can they access them? And then in terms of, um, people who have, uh, language issues that we, you know, make sure that, uh, this, this information is available in all languages. And to mobilize, uh, all the people out in the community, the faith-based community, the CBOs, et cetera, so that there is a collective effort to get this information out to residents and be supportive of their getting what they need. Next slide. What, in terms of gaps of services, one of the, um, issues that's come up is that there's a shortage of services up county. Uh, there was, there was a lot of concern about mental health services for kids. Um, the language issue has come up again. So one of the recommendations which we're making is to, uh, develop comprehensive place-based approaches to service provision, so that we're looking at all the communities, because we did look at all the communities, not just the urban communities, and make sure that up county and Clifton and, in addition to Passaic and Patterson, have organized, um, services available to their residents. And, um, again, the, the language issue came up here. Next slide, please. In health and well-being, uh, there were two big issues that came up in addition to obviously the, the COVID crisis, um, which is, um, you know, the big health issue at the moment. Uh, but the, the opioid crisis, uh, in terms of the, the increase in continuing increase in overdoses, um, it was, is a major issue that comes up both in the data and people, you know, giving their input. And one of the, one of the biggest things that comes up here is that the, the services and the way that the, um, you know, that the policy and sort of approach is developed, it's organized, what happen, it's all organized around what happens when people get into trouble, um, which obviously is important, and we have to have an organized system in response to people who are already experiencing, um, opioid addiction. But beyond that, there's a real interest and I think a real need to move beyond crisis intervention and make sure that there's aftercare available, but also that there are strategies in the community for prevention and early intervention so that family members and people who are beginning to experience problems know where to go and know where to look and have access to services that can avoid so many tragedies. In the, in the area of, um, prenatal care, there are still, uh, babies who are being born without prenatal care. Uh, and there's a lot, there are many families who don't have health insurance. So again, we've made some recommendations here in the full report, which again, I'll mention how we are, um, are recommending to, to deal with these individual recommendations. Next slide. In learning and education, um, one of the issues that came up pre-COVID but is now a real crisis, not only in Passaic County, but around the state and the country, is this whole issue of the availability of childcare, uh, particularly as people are trying to go back to work and they don't know what's, what they're gonna do with their kids. And so we've, um, recognized this as a major challenge. And, uh, you have a childcare resource and referral agency in the county, and we have some suggestions about how, um, we can step up and meet the challenge, um, of the childcare crisis, particularly in this time of COVID. And then in terms of the high school graduation rates, again, um, things are getting better, but they're not where they need to be. And there are a lot of suggestions about collaborative efforts between schools and service providers in the community and a variety of other, um, uh, potential collaborations that could, that help kids in school, um, do well and move into adulthood in a successful fashion. Next slide. So in terms of looking at the overall systemic challenges and opportunities, um, as I mentioned, the name of our report is Community Mobilization for Collective Impact. And that implies two things. The first is that people in the community are interested in doing something about these issues. And what I can tell you, you know, resoundingly, from everybody we talked to, from the public sector to elected officials, to, you know, people who are, you know, living out in various communities and around the county, people who are in health and mental health and education and, and we have, you know, in our final report, we have a list of, of all the people who participated in the, um, steering committee. There, there was a, um, resounding, and I would say from our experience, unusually high level of interest in people coming together to take these issues on. As a matter of fact, there was a feeling like, if we're not gonna do it now, we're never gonna do it. And we heard that over and over and over again. So we, we, when we call for community mobilization, we wouldn't do that unless we were very, very convinced that the entire Passaic County community is ready to, to jump into these issues in a different way. And then the second issue is collective impact. Uh, and that is that, um, none of these issues, if you look at the opioid crisis or housing or some of these issues around poverty or mental health, there isn't any one organization or level of government or, uh, nonprofit organization or sector that can take these issues on alone. But it's gonna take everybody working together in a different fashion with targeted collaboration to, to improve some of these outcomes that we've, uh, we've uncovered. And again, in addition to people being ready to take on the issues, uh, we found that they're ready to take on these issues together. And everybody wants to begin to move from this reactive crisis-based, you know, fund things based upon the silo of funding it comes out of, into, uh, moving more into organized systems of service that support people in doing as well as possible in their lives. And then again, and then again, the issue of racial, ethnic, ethnic equality came up over and over again. And so our recommendation is that all the planning and funding and representation we, we ought to do that this needs to be, you know, a major, major area of, of concern and focus and action. Next slide, please. So in order to, to mobilize the community for collective impact, we're recommending that, um, the, the county create a Passaic County Collective Impact Council that would be comprised of public and private sector folks, nonprofits, community representatives. Certainly it'll be the people who volunteered on the steering committee, um, could, could transition very nicely into this collective impact council. Make sure the municipalities are involved. Uh, there were some state folks who were involved in this process. But basically, um, we're recommending that their, the county establish a collective impact council to map out and implement strategies and systemic solutions to all these issues that we've raised. And that this council would, uh, take all these recommendations we've made and the findings we've made and, uh, make priorities out of them, because you can't take everything out at the same time. But this, this would be a way of the entire, uh, community coming, coming together to focus on, uh, improving the outcomes and the life of residents, uh, in the county. And in, 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 in support of that, we're also recommending, because, uh, a lot of these issues go across departments and different sectors of county government, that we're recommending a collective impact council in, inside a county government to make sure that all the departments and sectors of the county government are supporting the work of the Passaic County Collective Impact Council. And then finally is that we've been, uh, supporting the Department of Human Services to improve its operations and its image in the community with tremendous response out in the community. So we're, we're, we're recommending that that momentum be continued and built upon. So that's basically, um, you know, in a very, very cursory fashion, where, what we did, what we found, what we're recommending. But I think that the most hopeful aspect of this in a very, very dark time is the, the interest and the willingness and, um, almost the people crying out to get together and start moving together to, to tackle some of these issues. So as I mentioned, uh, the number one issue that came up, uh, is the issue of homelessness. Um, and with winter coming on, there's a lot of urgency to it, and everybody felt that urgency. So what we're recommending is that the first area that this collective impact, uh, approach be applied to is the issue of homelessness. So I'd like to now turn over to Dr. Linderman to walk us through, um, our thinking and recommendations around how through collective impact and community mobilization, we can make a dent into the homeless issue. Albert?
Yes. Thank you, Tom. Um, the approach of wanting to address homelessness automatically relates to addressing housing. And housing issues in Passaic County are under some pressure in certain areas. We'll look at some statistics here. Next slide, please. You see some of the background on the housing issues. Possible you, um, difficult for some of you to read all of this, but just to, um, briefly summarize that, uh, we are in, um, a plan to end homelessness that is now twelve years old. It was established, uh, twelve years ago and tending to be ten years in length. Um, unfortunately, uh, there's some reasons, perhaps, um, a lack of, um, a, a, a real addressing of the complexity of the issue, because homelessness and, and housing are quite complex and involve multiple players and factors. So, uh, the, the, um, the need of homelessness and the initiative and the attention that we're, we are recommending needs to be given immediately also includes an attention to affordable housing. we are recommending needs to be given immediately also includes an attention to affordable housing. So the two areas that are most difficult in Passaic County are Patterson and Passaic City. If there's one study with the 365 communities in, in the nation, Patterson is fifth from the bottom in terms of the percent of income that its residents are spending on housing. And Passaic City is last in the nation, meaning the highest percent of the residents' incomes being spent on housing. But next slide, please. We have homelessness growing in numbers over the last number of years. We, our last point in time count was January of this year. So since the beginning of the pandemic, the numbers are likely higher than what you see on this, on this slide. We also are aware that many landlords have filed notice of eviction that are all currently on hold till the end of November. But if they were all allowed to go through and the numbers of, of persons who are under eviction notices were in fact released into the system. At this point, there are around 4,000 individuals that, that are in danger of that in Passaic County alone. So as Tom mentioned, on more than one occasion, there is very strong spirit of collaboration for addressing this and knowing that not, not any one entity can of itself solve the issues, because if we could, we already would have. So as we decide to address something as dramatic as this, it's going to take all of us. Next slide, please. So immediately, there are some actions that can be taken that will start to address the challenges in homelessness and housing. We need an increased capacity of, of leadership in this area. So there's been some excellent work done in the county. It's not like there's nothing good going on around housing and homelessness. There are, but it's not coordinated. The, the players aren't in the room together or in the virtual room together. Understanding from their various perspectives and determining appropriate steps that are, is going to shift the system so that long-term we don't see the growth that we've seen over the last decade, but we can see a reduction because of how the system has shifted. You see that some certain specifics that are listed here under the immediate approach, there are some things that can be done. And, and not only ideas that have been presented, but also some initiatives that have been begun. The City of Patterson has a project, Hope, out of the mayor's office that has identified a number of short-term areas that can make a difference, at least in, in a, in a small way in, in addressing homelessness and, and then the, the need for affordable housing. The collective impact side, that's, that's where this collective impact council is going to make a significant difference in the long-term that outcomes that we can expect to see. One, one person's description of systems, Louis Thomas, he said, when we're confronted by any complex social system, whether that's a city or a county, and we, and with things that we are anxious to fix, you cannot step in and set about fixing with much hope of helping. You cannot meddle with one part of the system from the outside with all, without the almost certain risk of setting off disastrous events you had not counted on. If you want to fix something, you are first obligated to understand the whole system. Intervening is a way of causing trouble. And so this is the benefit of a collective impact approach and the idea of a collective impact council and particularly a homeless initiative addressing the needs of homelessness and housing. If we shine light from every angle of this community, from the nonprofit world, from government perspective, from business perspective, from the faith community's perspective, and from the citizens who are experiencing the challenges and are teetering on the edge of homelessness. As we see light from every angle, together we can begin to see the, the whole system in ways we've not seen it before and make the kinds of intelligent shifts that long-term are going to make a difference. That being the, the whole idea of this collective impact council. Next slide, please. And so our, part of our process of initiating systemic change is this public community partnership, this collective impact council to focus, to create a homelessness task force that will focus on the designing and implementing of an organized system of services and supports, both short and long-term solutions and tracking the implementation of this approach. And so now I'll turn it back over to Jeff Persely.
Thank you, Albert. I have the next slide, please. So just in summary, what, what we've talked about tonight and what we've presented to you focuses on the the next or leads to the next steps that we're proposing to take. The first is to create that collective impact council that was being discussed and create the collective impact cabinet of county officials. And the first step is the initial project to address homelessness. And we have a, a pretty significant schedule right now. The outreach to potential partners in this effort will be done by this week. And we're going to convene the homelessness task force by the end of this month. We are issuing an RFP for case management and individual support services tomorrow. And we plan to have services in place no later than the first of November. So are there any next slide questions and discussion?
So I, I just, I want to say first, thank you, Dr. Lindeman and Tom and Jeff, because I, I think this is certainly eye-opening for me. I, I won't speak for the freeholders, but there's a lot of good information here. And I think as Al said, you know, we have an opportunity here that maybe has never existed and maybe never will exist again. Having all of these partners willing. And I think the fact that, you know, I, I like to believe that, you know, something good has to come out of something bad, otherwise that something bad is just that, something bad. And I think the relationships that we have developed over these last, I don't know, eight months, I guess, with our municipalities working together and partnering together, that we really have a great opportunity to deliver services. And, and I think the most eye-opening thing for me, and again, I want, I want to commend the freeholders as well, because, you know, sometimes these reports, you know, are, are meant to point out our weaknesses, right? But, but again, the only way that we can strengthen them is to identify the weaknesses. So, you know, again, not always easy to hear, but necessary to hear. And this is a, an example of where if we can really partner with our municipalities, really partner with our Board of Social Services and, and the other stakeholders in this, this could really have an impact on Passaic County like we've never seen before. So again, I, I want to thank Dr. Lindeman and, and Tom and Jeff for their hard work and reaching out to, to the players and to the community and to freeholders and myself. So that we can, you know, see this report and have a blueprint on how we go about changing services. You know, it's such a fast-changing world and I, you know, unfortunately, I think as human beings, typically we don't change as quick as sometimes the, our surroundings change. But I think clearly we need to look at how we deliver services and, and one-stop shopping, right? And, and, and the world of computers and internet and everything, right? You, you just want to Google something and you want to find out where you can get it. And, and we need to be able to have that and be able to consolidate and streamline where people go to get services. Services that, you know, in many cases are, you know, a matter of life and death. So, you know, again, thank you all and I'll shut up now and let the freeholders ask any questions that they may have. But I'm very impressed with the report.
If I may, I'm thrilled with the report and, and Doc, it's been a pleasure working with you big time. I have a million questions, so I'm not going to do that tonight. As we, as we go along, I'll have them. For instance, funding, we're going to do an RFP with what funding and what's the goal? I don't want you to answer that tonight, but I'm very excited about this because it is at no beginning. And boy, is it needed in every one of these areas. So you, you, you're getting us to be able to eat the elephant and you start with a toe. So this is the start of eating the elephant and the start of eating the toe. And I'm very excited about it. It makes sense. It makes so much sense. I mean, I spent my life doing stuff like this, so I can't be happy. I appreciate everything you guys have done. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Madam Director, can I jump in here?
By all means.
Thank you, thank you. So I'll go ahead with Bruce and say that this is a long time coming and I'm glad we finally got this. I've only seen the presentation that you've just shared with us today. I hadn't had a chance yet to see the report. I haven't received the report just yet, so I'm looking to really dive into it. This is an area that is, is greatly needed and, and I'm glad that we were able to have some experts come in and help us out. I do have four kind of big questions. Again, I, I don't really need the answers right now, but I, I do want to put it on the record. And talking about the collective impact council, I think is a great idea. However, I will say that we already have several existing boards and committees that all deal with similar type of issues. Well, one of the recommendations be to consolidate some of these various boards and committees and commissions that we have and kind of bring them all together so into this collective impact council as opposed to having all these various ones. When I go into these meetings, it's a lot of the same people sitting around the table. I noticed that there's a couple of people missing from the conversation. But in terms of the people who are at the table, it's normally the same people at the table. So I want to know if we were considering consolidating some of that. I'm just going to get through these because again, you don't, you don't have to answer right now. Operationally, and I hate using the term cost-benefit analysis, but did you guys have a chance to look at the current programs that we already have? As well as the current funding sources that we have? And are we utilizing the money to the best of our ability? And are we getting the real bang for the buck with the existing programs and funding that we have in the Human Services Department? And if we're not, you know, what suggestions would you have in terms of, of staffing? Do we need additional people? Do we have the right people and so forth? Last thing around the homelessness issue. That analysis, I didn't even know we had a 10-year-old study that, that said we will eradicate homelessness 12 years ago. In 10 years, it shows that we, we really failed really bad. But it also mentioned that 75% or about 75% of the people that we've identified as homeless individuals suffer from form of mental illness or addiction. And again, that, that is telling that our problem homelessness does have something to do with affordable housing, but it has more to do with mental illness and addiction in addition to the affordable housing question. So the last part I'm going to put on this is you talked about Patterson and Passaic and, you know, them having more of the burden than the rest of the county. And I've always felt that, you know, we do need services spread throughout the county. I don't think it's actually fair for residents in West Milford and Wanaque and Ringwood to, to not have the same types of services that we have in the city of Passaic in Patterson and therefore have to send their residents to the cities of Passaic and Patterson for these long-term treatment facilities. So I, I will be interested in seeing us to create some sort of plan to essentially have people receive the services where they're from and support systems in place with their families and their community around them to really help them get through these mental illness and addiction problems that they have. And to also lessen the burden on already stressed cities of Patterson and Passaic who have to essentially provide the services for the entire county, not even county, but really the entire region. In a similar report, I saw that Bergen County says that they don't have a homelessness problem. That Bergen County does not have homelessness. They solve homelessness. Bergen County solves homelessness by sending all their homeless residents to Patterson and to Passaic. That's how they solved it. When you interact with many of the people who I have in these point-in-time counts and you ask them where they're from and you ask them, you know, where'd you go to high school? Where'd you grow up? Very, very few grew up in Patterson. There even fewer grew up, or even fewer grew up in Patterson, very few grew up in Passaic County. They're mostly from other places in the state. And I think it's time that we also have conversations with our neighbor about addressing this issue as seriously as we're addressing the issue and helping their residents and not just putting the burden on the county of Passaic and our, our two largest cities with Patterson and Passaic. Thank you, Madam Director. Sorry for taking so much time.
Oh, no, of course. Any other freeholders?
Sandy, I just wanted to make a quick comment or two. First of all, gentlemen, thank you for this report. Like TJ, I haven't read the report yet, but I'm going to take a deep dive into it. And I'm interested to hear what you have to say. I think there's some good news to talk about. You mentioned in one of the early slides about family and community relationships, that transportation was important. We actually have two items on our agenda tonight, K-45 and K-46, where we're going to be funding studies, what, what the NJTPA calls sub-regional studies. Studies of how best to deploy transportation resources to serve people here in Passaic County. So those focus groups that you had and the people that you heard from, we absolutely want to hear from them in the context of those studies that will be happening within our planning department. I was struck by a, a couple of places where you pointed out the need to get information about existing services out in the languages that immigrant communities speak. That's something that we've been working on in a lot of different ways. But it's also a challenge where I think there's something to be done at the state level, which is my recollection, when I sat with Bruce on the Board of Social Services, is that there were times, for example, when somebody came in speaking Bengali, where the person who worked for social services who spoke Bengali was not a, a caseworker or a service person, it was a janitor or some other sort of assistant. And the ability to hire more people with those bilingual skills and the ability to make foreign language facility a requirement for employment is something that we may need to advocate in Trenton for a, a reworking of the laws. And then with a focus on homelessness, I, I just wanted to say I've read a few things about homelessness and TJ is absolutely right. It's part of a combination of things that involves addiction and mental illness. And when you're talking about young people, very often identity is LGBTQ. So there, there, there's a whole wraparound set of services that are needed. At the same time, what some studies seem to be showing is that you talk about cost-effectiveness, the cheapest way to solve homelessness is to give homeless people a free place to stay. By which I mean, having a stable residence can also be the starting point for getting clean, for dealing with mental illness and getting treatment, for, for dealing with some of those other pathologies that surround homelessness. So let's be sure to look for some of the creative solutions that are already out there across the US as we try and grapple with this. And then, you know, to TJ's point, let's make sure that our stakeholders are coming out of the organizations that have been working on this for a long time already. But again, thank you. This was very informative and I'm looking forward to reading the whole report.
Anybody else?
I would just like to reiterate what Anthony said. I think that having Jeff and Albert and Tom come into the county and take a look at what we're doing from an outsider's point of view was so helpful. Albert, I've talked to you at length. We've sat together. I think what the recommendations you're coming up with are great. And as we move forward, I look forward to being a part of that. You know, part of this solution, because I think there's a lot we can do with all the recommendations and everything you've brought to our attention. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess um, we have access to this uh, PowerPoint?
Yeah, uh, they sent us a copy. I have a copy. I could forward it to the free.
No, not only that, they have a report that uh, I've seen. So there there is actually a written report that you may want to look at too.
Yeah, I
I'm not sure if it's ready yet, Doctor. So it is great, but I've seen parts of it, so.
Well, the PowerPoint kind of synthesizes all that information.
Yeah, right. That's right. It it is ready and and the PowerPoint does synthesize it, but yes, the the whole report is ready.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure.
Thank you all.
All right. Have a good night.
You too.
You too. Good night.
Good night, guys.
Bye bye.
Charlie, we're moving on.
Can I just say one more thing? Tony, you 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 absolutely recommended, you absolutely recommended the best company for this job. They did, they did an amazing job. Absolutely.
I'm really, I'm honestly, I'm I'm very pleased with it all and, you know, it's a complicated issue and I think, you know, to to frail their best point of uh, you know, as we hear a lot during this whole COVID about comorbidities and and many of what goes on. Um, whether it's, you know, are are people homeless because they can't afford a house? Are they homeless because of drugs? Are they homeless because of mental illness? Has the, you know, has has the mental illness brought on the drug addiction? Right? So there there there's so many moving pieces to the puzzle. That's why I think we have such a great opportunity having built such strong relationships with the sixteen mayors. Um, you know, I I, you know, and I'm I'm going to say this and maybe I'll get criticized. We need a stronger partner at the Board of Social Services. They need to be at the table at every step of the way, right? Because if we're going to deliver services, we all have to be on the same page. Right? So whether it's looking at the committees and consolidating so that we all have a single message. Um, you know, we have a good opportunity with the city of Patterson, um, you know, that that there are human services on their new leadership. So I, again, I think there's a great opportunity here to to strike while the iron's hot. Um, but it's only going to work if we really have all the partners at the table so that we can, you know, help residents who need help uh, find the services they need as easy and simply as possible. Right? Because I I, listen, I know, you know, from a personal standpoint, we went through it with my sister and it's very difficult when you don't know a system, when you've never had to look for services, where to find them, where to go. Right? And it would certainly be to everyone's benefit um, to to have that all under one roof. You you know, I I have that information under all under one roof. Obviously, there there's still autonomy amongst all of the partners, but, you know, to have that information under one roof. But I, you know, so uh, anyway, enough said. I don't want to belabor the point.
Okay, Charlie?
Uh, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. We're still in the middle of a COVID pandemic, so I'm going to give you a brief update on what's going on in Passaic County. Today is the um, MICA. All right, so today is day one ninety-three and we still, next slide. And we're still in the top five uh, counties by case count, next slide. But as you know, we are also carrying the heaviest burden um, by having the cumulative incident rate being highest in the state. Next slide.
Doctor Gungil, could you, I'm sorry, because I I've been questioned on that previous slide. You can go back to that previous slide. I I I've been questioning and and I will say that I'm not sure that I completely understand it and I'd like to be able to understand this so that I could when people ask me, wha- what is that telling us? What does that exactly mean? I I mean, I can read what you're saying, cumulative instances per one hundred thousand, but I I I'm not exactly sure what that means.
Okay, so when we're looking, when we're looking at big data as it pertains to a population, we try to have uh, the same playing field. So the level playing field is uh, the multiplier of one hundred thousand. So this slide means that, okay, I'm going to use uh, Passaic and Bergen as two examples. The previous slide showed that Bergen had the highest number of cases, right?
Correct.
We have less cases. But if our population were to be Bergen's population, which is just under a billion people and if you multiply our numbers, you, so our population is is half a million, right? Bergen is about a million. If we were to have the same incident rate for as, if Bergen were to have the same incident rate as Passaic County, then Bergen would have about thirty-six thousand cases.
And and incidents is positive tests?
Incident is new cases. That's the, that's the definition of incident. So positive test, cases.
Thank you.
Basically like a population density, right? Isn't that, isn't that what it is?
I'm sorry?
It's basically the incident rate as measured by population density to a degree, right? Is that what we're, basically what we're saying?
So incidence in its purest form is cases. Whatever the case is, that new case is called an incident. An incident. So the incident rate for the, for this particular slide, it is explaining that with a level playing field, if all the population in all the counties were the same, where would we land? And so we are landing at the front of that if every population had this, every county had the same population, this is where we would land.
So all things being equal, we would have the most?
Yes, yes. So what it demonstrates is that we have a higher uh, disease burden uh, for COVID nineteen when compared to the other, of the other counties in in New Jersey. Am I, is that good? All right, so let's move to the next slide. For this slide, uh, it's a different, I believe I used it last time as well. And what it's showing is how COVID has affected each municipality based on their population based on cases and based on deaths. So the orange, uh, the orange color is the proportion of the the entire population. So if, let's use Patterson because it's the largest, right? So the orange color is showing that Patterson represents twenty-nine percent of residents of Passaic County. The blue is showing the percentage of cases that Patterson has. So they have, they have forty percent of the cases. And then the gray is showing the percentage of deaths in Passaic County and they're showing of just under twenty-nine percent. All right, so they have a lot more cases um, in comparison to where, to what their population is. If we choose the city of Clifton, you could see that their proportion of the county population is a lot less. It's about uh, maybe seventeen percent. Um, their cases are less, maybe about fifteen percent. And their deaths are maybe about fourteen percent. So that's what this slide is trying to show, that that there are some municipalities where the burden of cases is higher as it is in Passaic. And I'll show you Wayne where uh, the deaths are higher, the burden of deaths in Passaic County is highest. As you could see, seventeen percent of uh, the deaths in Passaic County are due to Wayne residents and we've talked about this many times, the reason why. All right, Passaic City also has a high uh, proportion of deaths in comparison to their proportion of population. Next slide, please. This is the overall EPI curve. It's just showing what it looks like in terms of cases from the beginning of the outbreak until yesterday. So though we've crushed the curve, we still are having a few cases every day. Next slide. So this is a new slide that Passaic, uh, that New Jersey is showing and this is, this is showing the impact of COVID deaths in in uh, in the state of New Jersey. So that orange one represents deaths in New Jersey and this is all deaths combined. And you could see how prior to that, everything was approximately the same. But this is the impact that COVID has in New Jersey. We don't have it for Passaic County yet, but this is what it looks like in the state. Next slide. All right, so you've seen this uh, before and it's, it's a really busy slide, but you've asked me for this data many times. So this is just showing cases and case fatality rate and you'll have this, um, you know, if you need, if you'd like it. Again, we know some of the reasons why the higher numbers are there. Next slide. All right, confirmed cases. Again, you can see male and female are pretty much balanced, forty-eight to fifty-two percent. And the age range remains the same uh, for cases in Passaic County. Again, fifty to sixty-four, thirty to forty-nine, are, you're seeing a lot of cases. But as we know, the deaths are not really borne by that uh, age group. Next slide.
So Doctor Gungil, is that, is that percentage between male and female consistent with the state?
Uh, it's about, it has been about the same. Yeah, in in some, I've seen in some instances, it's a little bit uh, different. So I've seen as much as like forty, sixty. But throughout this, it's, it has been relatively um, fifty-fifty. Next slide. All right, so this is uh, the, the COVID cases by race and ethnicity. And you see New Jersey on the left and Passaic County on the right. And uh, consistent with what our population is, you see fifty-three point seven percent are Hispanic, uh, black or white. Um, twenty-four percent in Passaic County are are whites. Um, nine point nine percent are black. If you look at uh, whites in Passaic County, twenty-four percent in comparison to white in the state, which is thirty-seven point two percent. So this is a comparison with how we line up in comparison to, to the state uh, by race and ethnicity. Next slide, please. All right, these are deaths. Um, again, this is a breakdown by gender and this is the one that uh, we've seen um, that uh, uh, males seem to be more affected in terms of deaths um, than are female. Um, the, the graph on the right is showing the age group um, that contracted COVID and the deaths in that age group. Again, we know that older residents, in this case, for the eighty-year-olds and above, um, though they have seven percent of cases, they are, they are uh, forty percent of deaths are attributed to this age group. The one before, sixty-five to seventy-nine, though they have thirteen percent of cases, they have thirty-four percent of deaths. And a little bit, you know, you can see with the younger ages, um, you know, they're not as affected by death. So they might have higher incidence of of uh, COVID nineteen. For, for example, the thirty to forty-nine-year-old, uh, thirty-three percent of cases in New Jersey are attributed to that age group. But only six percent of deaths are attributed to that age group. So it's really, really critical for younger people, even, you know, if they get tested to isolate, um, if necessary and I really keep it seriously because grandma or grandpa can be affected uh, and could die because of COVID exposure. Next slide, please. This is looking at long-term care. As you know, long-term care has been affected throughout the country. Um, uh, it's the the most vulnerable population. Um, we currently have seven outbreaks. Um, and you can see the breakdown by staff and residents um, as well. Next slide, please. Uh, so this side, you can look at it at your leisure another time, but I just wanted to give you an idea of what testing has done in Passaic County. So the first column represents, I look at the very bottom and you could see a hundred and ninety-two thousand tests have been done in Passaic County. If you slide over to the one, two, three, to the approximate total unique individuals, a hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-seven unique individuals in Passaic County have been tested. Which is really uh, astounding because it means that about twenty-four percent of the residents in Passaic County have been tested for COVID. So this is, this is a, I don't, I haven't seen any other county providing this information, but I'd like to see where we rank in terms of this. I know the state has some of it, but um, but I think it's really a very good. North Haildon, as you could see, has the highest percentage of residents um, that have been tested. Um, followed by Patterson City um, and uh, Passaic City. Next slide, please. All right, this is the percent positivity and it keeps going down again. It's now down to two point seven six uh, percent. So this is really good and this was as of September nineteen. Next slide, please. All right, we continue the test. Next slide. All right, so somebody had asked me about at-home testing. Who is using at-home testing? And you can see from this slide that the municipality most represented is Wayne. Wayne has unveiled themselves of our, of our test-at-home program, which is fantastic. And West Milford, which is tremendous because what we're trying to do is reach people who might not have the access to all of the testing that we're providing. So uh, we have seen that of county, there is some use and we're glad about that. And obviously for all the other municipalities, uh, this is open to you and we really recommend if you can do it to to use this uh, resource. Next slide, please. All right, this is just showing you that we're all over the place with our testing. Next slide. Contact tracing continues. And again, I have to appeal to people when we call, please, please, please um, help us because we're just trying to stop people from getting sick. We're up to one hundred and forty-eight contact tracers in Passaic County. Next slide, please. Travel advisories continue. We're almost at five hundred residents who we have to have, uh, we have to reach out to and let them know that they have to sub-quarantine because of their travel. Because of travel. Next slide, please. All right, uh, we continue to say the same thing over and over. We still have to social distance, cough, use our, our mask, uh, clean and disinfect, wash our hands and get tested. Thank you. Thank you. I'm done.
That, that, Director, if if I may through you, um, Doctor Gungil, could you just talk a little bit about the last couple of days and information on the CDC website, off the CDC website, back on the C, what? I mean, what what should we know and what should we be telling, uh, you know, our constituents? Because I I I'm I'm not ashamed to say it's very confusing to me when that's a source that we have relied on since February that seems to be vacillating on what's going on their website and uh, and and seems to be changing daily. So if if you could just help me understand that.
Okay, so on on Friday, um, CDC had posted on their website that um, the COVID nineteen uh, virus is now airborne, which means that, okay, so I know it's confusing to some. So all of the time, uh, they were saying that it is uh, spread by droplet infection. And droplet infection happens when we cough, when we sneeze, when we speak. Um, and that's, that's the virus being on saliva. Um, on Friday, CDC said that the virus can also be uh, aerosol, which means it could uh, spread in the air. And that means that it doesn't need the driver of the saliva to take it where it needs to go. In other words, in the absence of the saliva, it can actually, let's say, land on dust particles that are always in the air. And that means it could linger in the air longer. And it also means that it could spread farther than the ten feet that we know. This is what was said on Friday. And then I believe on Sunday or Monday, that was removed from the site. Um, so what I would say is that it is definitely feasible that that has occurred. We know that other viruses and bacteria are able to be spread in the air. It's, it, the only difference is that um, that we were not told that officially before. And what CDC is saying is that that was posted in error. I would like to, I would like to err on the side of caution and say that it is entirely and say that it is entirely feasible for the COVID-19 to be spread in the air. And therefore, I think that it is imperative that we continue to wear our masks or face coverings and to socially distance as much as possible. Because whether or not they leave it on, on, on the site, we know that that occurs with other communicable diseases, so it's not impossible. And so my recommendation, which I had a conference call with the school yesterday, and my recommendation remains that they have put it there, and I am willing to, to use that because I think that that's good public health. I can just give you another example. CDC also have said that, you know, instead of 15 minutes, in, instead of 10 minutes, 15 minutes, they have changed that, they had changed that maybe about two or three months ago. And New Jersey has decided that we are going to maintain the 10 minutes because it just is making us, making our residents safer. Does that help, Mr. DeNolte?
What would help is being able to find the mute button. Yes, thank you. I, I just think it's, it's, you know, it's, it's very confusing when, you know, the source that we have kind of all relied on puts things up, takes things down, right? I, I mean, I think we're all, you know, we've all been through a lot, and we're all unsure, and I, and I know there's a lot more questions than there are answers about this virus, even, you know, even today. But, you know, just, it's confusing to the public, and it's confusing to me, and it doesn't make our jobs any easier as, you know, we're dealing with, you know, employees and wanting to make sure that we are keeping them in a safe environment. So thank you for helping to clarify that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Congil.
Welcome.
Okay, we're gonna move on to freeholder reports. I have nothing. I don't know if any of the other freeholders have anything they'd like to talk about. Okay, then, we'll move on to the oral portion of the meeting. Can I have a motion to open the public portion?
I'll second it.
Freeholders, actor. Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lazzare.
Yes. I know we need a few minutes for you to look at the screen.
Okay. First off, Director, we received a, at, at public, public@passaiccountynj.org. We received an email on, it is from Dematra Wertz, Program, Program Manager, Compliance Coordinator at New Community Corporation. Hello, my name is Dematra Wertz from the Family Service Bureau of Newark with the Hudson, with our Hudson office located at 379 Carney Avenue, Carney, and I wanted to share a message to be read during the meeting. The New Jersey Hope and Healing Program at the Family Service Bureau of Newark offers free support to New Jersey residents in the face of COVID-19 pandemic by providing crisis counseling and resource linkage services. The, the Family Service Bureau of Newark and Carney is committed in bringing free remote services for individuals, families, and children, healthcare workers, and groups in Bergen, Hudson, Essex, and Passaic Counties. We offer stress management techniques, communication skills for children and adults affected by COVID-19, coping skills, crisis intervention, support after loss, etc. Virtual workshops can be tailored to the population to serve. So that was received. On Facebook Live in the comments, we have Roz Thompson, Fielder Best, has my vote, Penella Pilly, Nice, Bruce James, Terry, Terry TJ, love you. Mr. Sanjay Desai checked in. Ivan Zeiderman, who said, "Good evening, United Way is here." She said it was a good presentation. Gino Avado Baris, "Good evening, everyone." Jay Pimby, "Hello, Gino." Alex Cruz, Francesco Cruz here. Jay Penny, "Transparency is powerful. It keeps us honest. We work, we work to do." Indeed, signed, Gino Avado Baris. I think we already answered this. Aria Mac asks, "What's the numbers for Passaic City for COVID?" Irish Ride mentions developmental disabilities, probably in reference to the presentation. Then Jay Pimby, "Great, great point, Best. This has come up, and I have heard that certain boards and other groups do not streamline the meetings due to bylaws, etc." Kim Patterson Cooper, "Need senior services." TJ, check your email. And Irish Free, again, I agree with Tony. Those are the 20 comments that we received, Director.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public portion? It's made by Freeholder Duffy.
Duffy, was it seconded by Freeholder Actor? Now, what was it seconded by? Bruce James. Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lazzare.
Yes. We're gonna move on to our consent agenda. Mr. Jordan, do we have any late starters or amendments?
Yes, Director, we have one amendment, and there are six late starters. The amendment is to K10, the resolution accepting the calendar year 2019 audit of the County of Passaic and authorizing the certification of the group affidavit pursuant to NJAC 530, 5:30-6.5. We just need to include the group affidavit form that was fully executed today by all of the freeholders. K48, which is a resolution authorizing the purchase of equipment and software from SHI International Corp. for the Passaic County Board of Elections to be used during the November general election pursuant to NJSA 4811-10 and NJSA 4811-12. K49 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of supplies from A. Rifkin Co. for the Passaic County Board of Elections to be used during the November general election pursuant to NJSA 48:11-5L. K50 is a resolution authorizing litigation by the County of Passaic against Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield of New Jersey and retaining Waters McPherson McNeil PC for outside legal services related to same pursuant to NJSA 48:11-5-SEC. K51 is a resolution approving an amendment to Resolution Number R20200744 that authorized the acceptance of grant funding from the New Jersey Attorney General Victim Assistance Grant Program, Sub-Award Number D1619. K52 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a British Labrador Rechever from the Indian Creek Kennels for the Creekness Valley Golf Course pursuant to NJSA 48:11-3-SEC. And finally, K53 is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to ADL Data Systems, Inc. for proprietary clinical and financial software for Creekness Healthcare Center pursuant to NJSA 48:11-5DD. Just remind all the freeholders, if there's anything on the consent agenda that you want voted on individually, just please make the motion through the Director to have it removed.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to amend K10?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lazzare.
Yes. And can I have a motion to add late starters, K48 through K53?
I'll move that.
Second.
Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lazzare.
Yes. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, K1 through K53?
Second.
Director, three, do, before roll call, I'd just like to point out two, I, I think, important resolutions that you'll be voting on right now, which would be K28, which is authorizing us to go out for advertisement bid for the replacement of the Fairlawn Avenue Bridge. That, that project has been a long project. We finally got all of the approvals from the state, and we are hopefully be able to start construction sometime early, 2020. Yeah, that's, that is long overdue. It's, it's quite the process, but we can see the finish, we can see the finish line, thankfully. And then the other bit of good news is K33, which is a resolution authorizing award of contract for Phase 1 of our Rifle Camp Park improvements. So as all of you are well aware, and I think the public who may be watching or listening, the Freeholder Board has invested a tremendous amount of money over the last 20 years or so in our parks. Rifle Camp is the last park that we, we are starting to attack and make improvements on. So this is a, another, in my opinion, monumental vote tonight to begin the improvements at Rifle Camp Park. That's all that I have. Thank you for indulging.
Thank you. Have a motion to move the personnel agenda.
Move the personnel agenda. You need a roll call.
I'd like to do a roll call. Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lazzare.
Yes. I got ahead of myself.
Yeah, now I'll move the personnel agenda.
Second.
Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lazzare.
Yes.
I'll move the bills list.
Move the bills list.
Second.
Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lazzare.
Yes. Have a motion to adjourn.
Move that motion. Second.
Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lazzare.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.
You too. See you later.
Great job. Thank you.